Mr. Bych. I call this meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I will point out that this is a continuation of our meeting begun on Tuesday, March 11th, at 5 West Main Street, Franklin, North Carolina. Is that correct? And so the purpose of the continuation of the meeting was to meet with the Southwestern Community College Board of Trustees and to conduct any other business that would come before the board. Dr. Thomas, I've got a consensus, my board member, we have four fairly quick pieces of business that involve some of the people in the room. If you'll pick if you got it, if we did that first and then we'll...
Yes, sir.
...part of the business, that's all right. Here no objection from any of the fellow commissioners. Gentlemen, we have before us a resolution to memorialize the life of Robert C. Carpenter and to name the Macon County Community Facilities Building for him in his honor and for his service to Macon County and the state of North Carolina. And Chester, I guess I'll turn it over to you and then recognize, I think we have Linda or Lindy, are you going to be...
I was just going to say to turn it over to Linda because I think she's the appropriate person to present this.
Why don't I just stand down here so I can sort this in your face?
That's fine, you're right here.
Yes, I'm very honored to be on a committee to work on this, to represent the citizens of Macon County, to honor a very outstanding citizen of Macon County who has deceased, but we are delighted to have his wife, Helen Carpenter, with us tonight and the members of this committee, including Robbie Collin, Sarah Briggs, myself, and Chester Jones. But let me just do it briefly and read this to you because it's a little bit long, but you'll understand why, it's a little curly, and I'll hurry. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Resolution to memorialize the life of Robert C. Carpenter and to name the Macon County Community Facilities Building for him. That whereas Macon County, North Carolina citizen, Robert C. Carpenter did live a very productive and full life from June 18th, 1924, to August 6th, 2011. And whereas Robert C. Carpenter did use his life to set an extraordinary personal example of service to others and his community, and whereas during his life, Robert C. Carpenter did serve many others and his community in numerous different ways and thereby set a tremendous example for those coming behind him. And whereas, the following are some of the various ways that Robert C. Carpenter used his life to serve others and his community. Eight terms in the North Carolina State Senate. Twenty years' service on the Southwestern Community College Board of Trustees. Member of Governor Martin's North Carolina Council on Adult Mental Disabilities. Member of Governor Martin's Commission on Literacy. President of the Franklin Chamber of Commerce. President of the North Carolina Association of Community Colleges. Macon County Commissioner. Asheville and Franklin District Deputy Knights of Columbus. Honorary Chairman for later life, or a member of that. Knights of Columbus Life Membership. And whereas, in his service to others and his community, Robert C. Carpenter received numerous awards which include, but are not limited to, the following. Twenty Year Service Award from the Southwestern Community College Board of Trustees. Was Hall of Fame nominee for the Charles Griffith Jonas Award, North Carolina Republican Party. Received the Boyd Elliott Memorial Award for service to the North Carolina Horse Industry. Received the Outstanding Member Milestone Award, Kokomo Jr., Chamber of Commerce. Received the Order of Longleaf Plan Award by Governor Martin. Received the Certificate of Appreciation from the Public Policy Institute, Western Carolina University. Received the Optimist International Youth Club Building Award. American Legion Outstanding Service Award. North Carolina Cancer Control Plan Leadership Award. Franklin Little League Award. C. Odell Tyndall Award from the North Carolina Rehabilitation Association. Coach of the Year Award. Tri-County Community College Achievement Award. National Resource Legislative Award. North Carolina Council on Community Mental Health Leadership Award. American Cancer Society Award. North Carolina Association of Rehabilitation Facilities Distinguished Service Award. North Carolina Knights of Columbus Night of the Year Award. State of North Carolina Distinguished Service Award. Macon County Appreciation Award. Distinguished Service Award from the Franklin Chamber of Commerce. Received the Certificate of Appreciation from the Travel and Tourism Industry of Southwestern North Carolina and recognized as Macon County Citizen of the Year. Whereas, the lifetime personal achievements of Robert C. Carpenter include, but are not limited to, the following. U.S. Navy Pilot in Training, World War II. Received a degree from the University of Virginia and attended Western Carolina University and Purdue University. First to recruit African-Americans to play Little League Baseball in Asheville. Longtime member of the Optimist Club. Longtime member of the Rotary Club. Grand knife of KOC in Asheville and Franklin. President of the J.C.'s. Started Little League Baseball in Franklin. Served on the Board of Angel Hospital in Franklin. Active member of Franklin Chamber of Commerce. Delicate to the Republican National Convention. Nominated as a U.S. Ambassador to the Vatican. Very active in SARs, S-A-R-S. Very active in the Smoky Mountain Mental Health Ward. Instrumental in getting Highway 441 Welcome Center. Instrumental in getting natural gas lines to Western North Carolina. Very instrumental in getting the Veterans Clinic to Franklin. Slavered long and hard for cancer legislation and coached Little League Baseball for 30 years. I'm sure there's more, but that's sufficient. Whereas, the life and service of Robert C. Carpenter to others and his community humbles those who come behind him and has encouraged and set a strong example to those who follow him to use our lives and talents in service to others in our community as he did. Whereas, in recognition of his lifetime service to others and his community, the Macon County Board of Commissioners desire to memorialize the life of Robert C. Carpenter by naming the Macon County Community Facilities Building in honor of Robert C. Carpenter. Okay, so do I need to hand this to you? It says, "Now therefore, upon motion of Commissioner So-and-so, seconded by So-and-so, that the Macon County Community Facilities Building, da-da-da, shall be named Robert C. Carpenter Community Facilities Building." I submit this to the board.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we will echo everything that you read. Outstanding people to be and very deserving of having that building named for him. I'm sure Hollis and Rinn will agree. In discussion, gentlemen, or do we have a motion to approve that?
Oh, would you change it?
Just a motion by Commissioner Havens, seconded by Commissioner Page. In discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's record and show it. Motion passed unanimously. So... Ms. Helen, would you share a few words with us? Ms. Helen, would you like to say something?
Just want to say thank you. I think it's wonderful.
Well, thank you.
The truth of the matter is, she served in Raleigh with him and worked as hard as he did. And they still call her and ask her questions, "Mama?" Yeah. I have mama to two S's.
She's a patriarch.
Mama.
Well, very deserving, Helen, and we appreciate you and your service to the community. We realize a lot of things Bob did was with you by his side, so we recognize you as well as Bob at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helen. We'll instruct our county manager and our recreation director to come up with some appropriate signage for the building and probably just be on the sign out front of Will's, probably the sign of the building as well. We'll let you know when that signage goes up and we'll have a little ceremony out there. There's you handling that.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir. Thank you. I need to move these documents.
Mr. Chairman, what I did is I prepared several originals because it would be family members and others that would want an original copy.
So a little original signature on it.
And if the chairman does not desire to do that at this point, I will make sure that those get to the appropriate public.
And I certainly desire to do it appropriate.
Yeah. Later.
Okay. I'll sign these and we'll get them to you. Okay. All right. And you guys are welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to go do something more fun. Mr. County Manager, the next item is the lease, the Hollywood Convenience Center. Or I guess Chester, you have that.
Yes, I do. If I may hand these to Mr. Chairman. As you recall, the need of Hamstrud had communicated with the board about the lease to renew the lease agreement for the Highlands Road Convenience Center. I did a deep look at that lease and found that indeed it had inspired. I spoke with Ms. Hamstrud. She has indicated that she desires to enter into a two-year lease in the county at this time upon the same terms. And she has provided also an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. So theoretically, you could go as long as the leasurs.
Okay.
And the lease terms as provided are otherwise the same.
Did anyone receive a copy of this by either of you?
Yeah.
Any questions for Chester or a motion to approve that to be in order?
Motion to approve the lease.
Seconded by Commissioner Beale. Seconded by Commissioner Page. Any discussion? If you're not all a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chester. Do you need both of these in these signs?
I think it would be appropriate. We can do that, do all of that at some time later.
Okay. We'll do that. The next item, our county, the next two items our county manager has in regard to the Parker Meadows Recreation Park.
Mr. Chairman, before we discuss those, Ms. Dale West is here tonight.
Okay.
If I could make a recommendation that we could somehow include her into this agenda. She has some things that she needs to bring to our attention. They're going to be really pressing and could potentially have an impact on the county here in the very near future. So if I could make that recommendation to you at this time, could we take that up before we...
Okay. Gentlemen, any objections? Any objections? Here it is. Ms. West, I think that's you.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners.
You're going to go up that way, where you want to sit, or where do you want to go?
I see. And you...
Right there, buddy.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Mr. Attorney, I do want to say thank you first of all for your time, for the opportunity to come before you and share some information with you regarding your local Division of Workforce Solutions Office, formerly known as the Employment Security Commission. I will not say that out of the word that all of you would call our office the unemployment office. It is the employment office. There are some circumstances and a situation that is affecting us soon. And in order for you to have the most educated and the most precise information regarding this, I asked my regional manager, Jim Matlinhand, who has the region from Hickory West, North, South, as his territory, to come and share that information with you. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to introduce Jim Matlinhand.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I work at Nashville, and as Dale said, I've got the 22 westernmost counties here in the state and as part of the region. I guess let me give you as quickly as I can kind of a thumbnail sketch of what the issues are and how we got here. Couple of years ago, what was the Employment Security Commission, we were merged under the Department of Commerce into a new division, still the Division of Workforce Solutions. So that's where the DW issues and the tax year now came from. Anyway, about a year ago, the legislature decided to change the unemployment insurance law in North Carolina. A lot of you probably are somewhat familiar with those changes. They were pretty major, but as part of that, and I guess one of the main focuses of the new legislation for unemployment insurance was to get the federal debt paid. We had the federal government, about $2.7 billion. And so that brought about a lot of those changes. But because of the size of the debt, the legislature also started looking at the state budget to try to capture any money they could also put toward the payment, repayment of that debt. Well, a good portion of the funding that we received for our field offices, $19 million a year, was part of that money that they redirected. And so beginning July 1st of this past year, we started battling budget issues. And we knew fairly well around the state, we could continue to operate. The decision was made by the Secretary of Commerce, and I'm sure in concert with the Governor's Office, that even if we had to realign offices, that we would not close offices here in North Carolina. And we fell true to that. It's been tough. But part of the process was we analyzed every region of the state, tried to figure out where we could still have, you know, how many employees we could have at each location, how we could provide alternative services and alternative locations in some of these places. And just to give you an idea, in the 22 counties that I worked with, we had 19 offices. Out of those 19 offices, 11 of them have been realigned, meaning they've been reused in some form or fashion, either through staffing or the number of days of service. Or we've had to, as leases ended, we've had to combine with other partners in their space, we've had to relocate. The office here in Macon County is one of the offices that was targeted for realignment. So far, we haven't had to relocate that office because thanks in part to the Southwestern Commission, their workforce program funding allowed them to pick up the last six months of the lease, which will end June 30th. So we've been able to continue that same building for this period of time. But come June 30th, when the lease ends, I don't think they're going to have the funding to continue paying that lease for us. So our direction from the state level is, you know, let's try to find free space because here's kind of the long and the short of the funding. Not only did we lose the $19 million that we previously have been getting for office operations that went toward paying the UI debt, but we also lost a, for many years, 75 years, we did actually operate the unemployment insurance program. The last couple of years, that's been turned into a computerized, remote system. In other words, people can file by computer, or they can call a number, work through the computer questions using their phone and file that way. So we're not really doing much unemployment insurance anymore. Hopefully, we're going to start very soon with trying to get the unemployed claimant back to work. As part of all this modernization in recent years, they have not been required to come in and officially register with our local offices and look for work. They can do that online. But I think this is a move in the right direction to get them back in. But anyway, we lost the funding for that, which was another five million. Because we were merged into Commerce, we could no longer operate job training programs because the Department of Commerce receives the federal funding for job training and it was seen as a conflict of interest. So you start adding it all up, it's real money. It's $30 million out of about a $60 million budget. And so consequently, we have actually lost from a high of about 900 employees when we started this process, we're down to 500 employees statewide. So in the region, it's, you know, proportional, and we're down about 40% of our employees. So that's the reason that we're trying to effect cost savings. And so that's why, I know in the last few months, Dale and I, we met sometime back with Jack Horton before he retired, told him of our dilemma, and he said he would, you know, the county was supportive of us and would try to do something for us if they could. And so obviously, now that we're getting closer to June 30th, we felt a little more pressure. So thankfully, Dale was able to talk to the county manager now and allows to come before you tonight. So Dale, have I covered everything? Do you think there's any details? And we'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's kind of the problem in the nutshell.
How many employees do you have here?
Dale, I'll return the...
Or, as you know, the Franklin local office also includes Jackson County and Bryson City. So affecting next week, I will have four permanent employees to keep those three offices going. And I now have four in Haywood County because I've assumed those duties as well.
Dale's our new Waynesville manager, but as part of this restructuring, the Franklin, Silva, and Bryson City offices are also part of Waynesville now. So it's a four-county operation.
So Dale, you still operate a full as far as daily scheduling each office? Every day is open?
Silva and Bryson City now are on a part-time schedule. Silva's open Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Bryson City, Tuesday, Thursday. Franklin, Macon office is open five days a week. But that is because we have partners. The Community College has staff that's in. We have other partners who come in to assist us as well. But our hope is to keep service in Macon County five days a week. We have five days a week in Haywood County as well.
So your biggest problem is space?
Space.
Yeah, I didn't even try to get into the other end of things, which is the integrated services. We do hope that by integrating the workforce system, by partnering with our workforce partners and community colleges, that even with the loss of the staffing we've had, that there'll be cross-trained staff, will be able to handle a variety of different programs, so it will help offset the loss of the staffing that, you know, that we've had to afford in the last year.
How many options? You had 19 options. How many are you closing?
We still have 19, but I was, 11 of the 19 are part-time. Yeah. Or have been.
Absolutely. Just help me understand, why would you close an office that serves three counties?
Well, we would hope not to close any of them. And that's why they...
Well, I'm saying not funded.
Well, just because there's no money, there's not enough money. See, we, across the state, we have for years operated 89 locations. And this is, if you contrast what we do in North Carolina to most of our neighboring states, they have about half as many. And we've just always believed that our rural counties deserve the same services as our urban counties. And so we've really stretched over the years to try to keep them open. This is just stretching the rubber band a little tighter and, you know, our saving grace and all of this will probably be the integrated services. Our partners are coming together in one location now, and we're all cross-training and people can provide a variety of services as opposed to...
Are other offices being, the locations not being funded as far as rent?
Well, there's probably...
You had 19 offices, and you have an office here that serves three counties. Are other counties in the same situation in your region?
Yes. Well, but here's, for clarification now, Franklin office serves Macon County because we still have the Silva office and the Bryson City office, but they're part-time.
And the county does provide space there for us in each of those counties?
Okay. And that's pretty similar to what we have. There are very few counties in the state where we don't have some presence. I mean, in our 22 mountain counties, only Cherokee and Clay, excuse me, only Clay and Grandmother and Polk. And Polk's no longer in our, we reorganized. I don't have Polk, but I do have Madison. Madison doesn't have any kind of definite, you know, permanent presence, but the folks have always come to welcome, so, you know.
So you're looking for, you're looking for a space to house four boys?
Four. Two. Four of us and perhaps three to four partner staffs.
What do you think the lease stays? Have you talked to your landlord yet? What, what?
His lease expires June 30th.
I miss what you're giving him, free rent for like 10 years.
I'm good, but I'm not that sure.
That'd be great.
Our lease expires June 30th. We have to give him a 60-day notice when he's coming up here soon to give him that lease. As you know...
How much is your rent?
Our rent is...
I need to look at that.
$4,000, man?
Sounds rough.
I think so. I think it's, yeah. As you know, the unemployment rate is going down while people are going to work. However, we're still seeing in Franklin 40 to 50 people per day looking for jobs. So it's not like we're sitting there with no people coming in. We're still trying to assess their needs to see what kind of training perhaps they need to work with the Community College. What are their barriers that they don't, they're not employed? So our job is to put people to work.
I will say also, we're federally funded, people that are state-operated organizations. And the only state money we had gotten in the years was the, what we called the worker training trust fund, and then it went on to become the reserve fund. And that was the $19 million I referred to, which really kept us afloat for the last four or five years. But I would say from what we have heard from the state level, there's probably little or no chance that the legislature will, will say that this year. So that's why we have only the federal funds to count on. So total, total focus is about half the board wants.
How many square feet in that building? Do you know the...
Pardon me?
How many square feet in the building would you add in?
Might be 4,000.
Not off the top of my head.
4,400, maybe, something like that. But it wouldn't have to be that large because that building is a house, though.
Scratch in my head.
I think all we can do is ask our manager to look into that and say, "Okay, you're coming back to us with a record date." We have another meeting in three weeks.
Okay. I'll look into that and we'll back to the board.
Right, go ahead with everybody, let Derek look into that.
That's fine. I sit here and think it's about the perfect place, but it don't belong, Gus, it belongs to the old city hall. Yeah. They might work with...
Derek, that might be it. You got former ties with Stan Franklin. I started talking, yeah. We'll see how many was that.
So you're, make sure we got the dates. Do you have to give 90 days?
60 days.
60 days notice, June, May, April.
April 30th.
So we would need to, if we're going to offer something, we need to do that by the end of April.
And this fine gentleman is retiring April 30th. After 40 years...
About taking your spots, right?
After 40 years of service to the state of North Carolina, he's the only regional manager I've ever had, so there's a lot of wisdom walking out the door, I can tell you. I do have his home phone number.
Dale, is there a notice to renew or is it to end the lease?
The lease ends. We could renew, but we don't have any money to...
No. You have to give a notice to end it?
Yeah.
Yes.
You have to give them 60 days.
That property in North Carolina does not allow you to break the lease. Unless you ever want to lease, have another lease.
So does, it's not ending of its, by its terms, is what I'm asking?
It is.
Yes, it is.
But we still give 60 days notice, just so the landlord will know we do not intend to renew the lease.
Who owns that building?
Ken Liner, Haywood Contracting from Waynesville.
And he also has our Waynesville?
Yes, he has the Waynesville office as well.
We certainly appreciate any consideration, so...
Mr. County Manager, I think consensus is more if I'm reading everybody's properties to, have you looked into that? Maybe following from Mr. Havens' suggestion, make a talk to the town of Franklin about that too?
We can do it.
Between County of Little Bay and 42. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Not to himself, but to our...
You make me, Dale. Now, County Manager has the remaining items.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Chairman, first here, the consideration of engineering proposals for the Parker Meadows Recreation Park. What I have first is a resolution that was drafted by our county attorney exempting the engineering professional from Chapter 143, Section 64, Subsection 31 of the North Carolina General Statute. And what that is, is it allows units of local governments to exempt particular projects from this article, which is basically the amount less than $50,000 that we talked about that is the new limit for design professionals when you're acquiring them for a project where that amount used to be unlimited. So all this is doing is basically acknowledging that we have received a proposal for engineering services under the amount of $50,000. Mr. Attorney, might I correct?
That would be for phases two and three of the Parker Meadows project. And as County Manager has indicated, this is to exempt this particular project, phase two and three, from the application of the statute of reference, which would normally require that the matter be put out and advertised for proposals. But due to the small nature of it, the state legislature has recognized that for transactions for engineering services or architectural services, as the case may be, of less than $50,000, the board may, within its discretion in writing, exempt that particular project from the requirement of putting it out for proposals. In this particular case, Mr. Rowland, our county manager, has in fact done some checking with not one, but two engineers, and the prices came in fairly close.
Well, they did, they did. And we, if you recall, we started out this process and this entire project with Mr. Michael Boyd. And in doing that, he had finished the work prior to... And in doing that, he had finished the work prior to February eighteenth, whenever we were just going to do what was required for the part of match of-
Phase one.
Phase one. That work was completed. He did have some remaining contract left. That contract has since been dissolved with him. And when we voted on February eighteenth to move forward with phases two and three, the entire scope of the project changed. So in noticing that, I entertained some proposals from another engineer, a local engineer, that we had had a history with and has had a history of working with Macon County, as well as Mr. LeBoy. Both of these engineering proposals that, that we had received included the site development plans, the permitting that would get us through the entire project, bidding both formal and informal for each segment of the entire project, as well as construction observation for nine months. One came in at an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars, five hundred, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That amount came in from Mr. LeBoy. However, it did indicate in that agreement that he's not going to cover travel costs, printing expenses, and, and things of that nature. Mr. Lackey came in at forty-nine thousand, seven fifty, and his, his proposal was, you know, covered the same things that I just indicated Mr. LeBoy's did. And after conversation with each of these gentlemen and reviewing this proposal with Mr. Jack Morgan, the Director of Planning, Permitting and Development, Mr. Matt Mason, Seth Adams, and other county staff that have been involved in this project from the ground up, I would ask tonight that following if the board wanted to sign this resolution exempting the engineering design from the provisions of this general statute, that the board would also authorize me to enter into an agreement on behalf of the county with Mr. Larry Lackey for engineering services for this project. We do have, the reason we don't have an agreement here to sign tonight is because in reviewing these agreements with Chester, there are some things that part of this going to require be included in these agreements that we need to get included in here. It's nothing that will affect the price of this proposal. It will just simply get us in line with laws of the state of North Carolina. And in doing that, I would just ask that the board authorize me to enter into that contract or that agreement on behalf of the county with Mr. Lackey upon us making those corrections as seen appropriate by legal counsel.
Okay. Think we'd need to do those separately. I think first you take up the waiver issue and, and if you should adopt that resolution, then and in that, you could consider approving the proposal of Mr. Lackey.
Does this put us finished with Mr. LeBoy?
Yes, sir.
Has he done everything? Has he fulfilled his previous?
Yes, he, there was eight thousand dollars remaining in his contract. However, he was finished with his duties and indicated that he would, as we moved forward into this phases two and three, agreed basically that this was an entirely different project. The whole scope was changing. So we acknowledged that, you know, we could terminate that contract, and we did, so.
What I didn't see just was timeline.
It's a nine month. It's for a nine-month construction process.
No, I mean, you get stuff back to us in a timely fashion.
Yes, that will be, Mr. Lackey has included in here. If it's on page, like you said, April fifteenth. There's a big wet date of April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen is proposed, so we're gonna, we're gonna get it.
I didn't like that name. I wanna tell this board, I think that's ambitious.
Yeah, it's ambitious. We, you know, for right now, but, but if you would like us to include as part and parcel of that agreement, a timeline in there, however, you know, time is of the essence on getting this project started.
Think by the time you comply with the MBE and, I mean, it's just, it's just very difficult.
But in that space, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, just, but I think it's important we have some type of legal timeline, allowing the projects in the best to get a return back from the engineering entity.
That was, that was one thing, you know, from going through this and behind my recommendation of Mr. Lackey. Another thing was he is local and he, you know, he's got an office here in town, and if we'll, we'll be able to, to work-
We scheduled an appointment with Mr. Lackey tomorrow morning at ten o'clock to address these items that Mr. Rowland has mentioned, and the issue that you've raised could certainly be joined in that meeting.
And Derek, have researched this. I hear you say it is your recommendation that we approve the waiver and that we approve Mr. Lackey's contract differently?
Yes, sir.
Questions for County Manager or-
A not-to-exceed number there. Those folks have a bump at fifty thousand.
Yeah, they're not, not pretty close.
It's amazing, yeah. And there are not-to-exceed numbers. That's a steadfast number, because all of them have addendums in there for what was mileage, mile R, a bunch of, as Terry continued, printing costs. Is that included? All of, you know? Because I will be sitting here a year from then, we get another change order, which is the pattern that we've developed over the years. And when we say not to exceed, we leave that in there and we take it out.
The, if you will look in your agenda packet on page three of Mr. Lackey's proposal, again, we are going to be needing to discuss this tomorrow. Page three is all of the owners' responsibilities, you know, things like submittal fees if required for submitting our permits, legal administrative fees if required, soil investigation and construction testing if required, cost for reproductibles, bluets, copies, et cetera. Those-
Need to be detailed.
Are the owners' responsibilities under this contract, and are not included in one of some fees or estimates.
Did Lamar get the survey done, that two-foot? Because he'd say Lackey doesn't have all that prior to, he is just out of there. And if he's sitting there waiting for some of this preliminary stuff, that's gonna blow your April fifteenth.
I think that everything, what he's going to do after speaking with Lackey is gonna, he is going to send a certified letter to Mr. LeBoy that authorizes him to work off what's been done previously. And under engineering, the engineering law or whatever it might be, that is acceptable, and it's an acceptable engineering practice. So he's gonna have that and get him started that way.
So we're not redoing?
No, we're not, we're not gonna be redoing anything that's already been done.
Correct. And then all the soil work he's gonna call for is additional.
He has-
I know LeBoy spelled his out with, uh, but I didn't see that in Larry's, but it's gonna be the same cost either way.
Yes, the, he does have, Mr. Lackey does have in his proposal on page two, Roman numeral fee three, construction phase and geotechnical engineering, and that's onsite observation, pay requests, and shop dogs are included in that. So both of them, in one way or another, spelled out the geotechnical work required on that. And in speaking with each of them, it seems to be that we're going to just have to have some kind of geotechnical math or bargaining agent for the road, and that's gonna be where the difficulty of that work comes into play.
Good job. Any other questions?
Is this engineering, is it, remind me, is this reimbursable? This is not reimbursable through the party.
You're correct.
One more thing I'd like to add. If you will look on page four, put on the minimal three here, a budget for engineering record for nine months is proposed, where total cost not to exceed seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty, including soil proctor and capacity testing as maybe required. So while, he spells it out there, and this was a back-and-forth discussion, kind of, it's kinda like buying a car, just a little back-and-forth negotiation, and so this is what we brought that up.
So that's a contingency on that island. We'll come out of the meeting or you'll lose the project.
Yeah, we'll come out of the project.
We approve five hundred thousand for the remainder of this, this year on that project, and we'll come out of those funds.
But it was contingency on that island. Probably didn't have engineering.
Right, of the, of the specific project, yes, sir. It will be coming out of the contingency on that project. And we were, I think, expecting two hundred thousand in that line item, so we've, we've already got a good start on this.
But we, but we need those feet warm, please.
Yeah, that's one of the-
Right, yeah, so we put two hundred thousand. Now we're, we're starting out good here. We've come out of the external.
Motion to approve the waiver. The contract is submitted by-
I think, any more of those in separate motions?
Motion to approve the waiver, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have second? Do we have motion and second? Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passage unanimously. Now motion to approve the contract with Mr. Lackey will be in order?
Subject to, subject to the changes or restrictions, it's gonna happen at eight o'clock in the morning. We're gonna give the funding, timeline, and other items.
And to- And to authorize Derek to act on behalf.
Of the county.
Okay, sir. Do we have second to that motion? Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have motion and second. Any discussion? Here, none on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for an excellent job. Oh, man, we appreciate it very much. Any other, County Manager?
Yes, just with the consideration of the architectural proposals for Parker Meadows Recreation Park, kind of the same thing. Again, the resolution exempting the design professional from the general statutes, or same chapter, section. We have that resolution here, as well as included in your agenda packet. We have basic services and scope of work submitted to the county by Mr. Tom Ritter. What we have currently is a concessions facility, a scores booth, scores support facilities, as well as a picnic shelter with ADA compliant restrooms and storage on site. This total is sixteen thousand dollars. It was brought to our attention that this did not include dugouts. So we're currently, just like we're having a meeting with Mr. Lackey in the morning at ten AM, we're also gonna meet Mr. Ritter there. Dugouts will be included in this proposal following that meeting, as well as including the same stipulations into these agreements that bring you in compliance with North Carolina law. Following that meeting, expect to be able to move forward.
The only difference that we have is I do anticipate that there'll be some additional expense for doing the work on the dugout. In addition, there is one other piece of work that will have to be added to the proposal, and that's the, for a pad to construct a pre-pad maintenance shed on. It'll be apparently a concrete pad that will have to be divided and put out as well. But the number originally was how much?
Sixteen thousand.
I would propose that this board authorize your County Manager to negotiate within a range on that. I feel certain that this project can, in its entirety, be done for less than twenty-five thousand, and I would encourage you to authorize them up to that level to do that.
Should that, should that go on the record? Give us all of-
I'm gonna say it.
Give us all of the buffer?
Well, I, I think we're gonna, we'll be meeting with him tomorrow as well, and we'll simply ask him what will be entailed, what kind of power would be involved.
I can't imagine you charging nine thousand by the morning.
I can't, I can't.
There wouldn't be no toll. I know I'm able to, I took the million one, but, motion to approve.
You, are you saying approve the waiver? We have to approve the waiver first.
Approve the waiver first.
Okay. Motion to a second?
Second.
Motion, Michael Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Here, none on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously. Now a motion to approve the contract not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to be negotiated by our County Attorney.
Subject to approval by County Attorney in those additional terms.
Okay. We have that motion, motion and second. Motion, Michael Commissioner, takes second by Hayden. Any discussions?
Nice to see that he puts a dollar twenty-five per shooting.
Any other discussion? Here, none on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, guys, for your patience, Dr. Thomas. We have next little business. The history of this, County Manager contacted me two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever it was, and said that Dr. Thomas had a question, a meeting with our two boards, and pitching that to our board, we decided to do a continuation meeting of our last meeting and invite your board to join, so welcome. We're glad you're here. I thank all your board members here. Mr. Bell is chairman of that board. Is there anything to share? Got Dr. Thomas?
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and esteemed commissioners. As you recall, back in December, we had presented at the commissioners' meeting a thoroughly detailed and lengthy presentation on the Macon County Master Plan. Probably, my passion starts to run deep and I get excited about what we do, but I'm gonna try to make this one a lot quicker this evening and do more of a review, and then we will move into a request to approve, kind of, and work toward a master plan in Macon County. First of all, though, as, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, Mr. Bell is here as chairman of our board. We have Mr. Holt, who is our vice chairman, Congressman Earl. Mr. Earl is a member of Board Trustees. We have Mr. Sutton, who Public Safety and Training Complex is named after. And then we have Mr. Gary Shields and Mr. Jeff Pluer. We have Dr. Cheryl Davis, Dean of the Macon Campus. We have Curtis Doyle, Dean of our Public Safety and Training. Nan Coulter, Executive Administrator Assistant, Breen Castle. Business Officer and Computer Tech for me, also, and Mike Watson is here, who was Allison Watson, who worked on the master plan developing it for us. If I could take, I have a short video that's about nine minutes, and I think it's, it, I don't think, I know it's pertinent to what we're discussing here this evening. This is important for us and Macon County for the future of the residents and the growth of our campus, and then just the growth of the educational services, so.
Education is core to our economy. But in order to guide our educational systems and maximize future income, we must understand-
Can you hear that?
-between education and our own behavior. In my pursuit of higher education, I have earned two bachelor's degrees, two master's degrees, and am working on a PhD. In total, this has cost me over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've done all this because I believe formal education is important. Part of this belief came from seeing charts like this, presenting a correlation between higher degrees and higher income, showing on average that a person with a college degree earns far more money than the average person without a high school diploma. This perceived higher earning for having a four-year degree has fueled a college-for-all philosophy, causing educators and parents to encourage going to the university, any university, to major in anything in pursuit of future job security, social mobility, and financial prosperity. This philosophy has increased college enrollment, resulting in sixty-six percent of high school graduates in this country enrolling in higher education right after high school. That's two out of three. Initially, they are deemed the successful ones, but what you won't see advertised is the reality that most drop out, and only a quarter of those that enroll will finish a high school degree. Only after these few graduate do many of them start exploring careers. It is here that they discover that their degree may not have prepared them for the world of work. You may be well-educated, but not every degree is direct preparation or employment. This misalignment between degrees and job skills causes half of university graduates to be underemployed in what are called gray-collar jobs, taking positions that do not require the education they have received, which costs that is more than they can afford. Conventional wisdom suggests that a university degree guarantees a higher salary, but with rising education costs, a shrinking job market, and the oversaturation of some academic majors in the workforce, this old advice is now a myth for a majority of students. The economy and the world have dramatically changed. Over the last three generations, we've gone from thirteen percent of the population stepping into a college classroom to sixty percent attending some form of higher education. In nineteen sixty, when taking into account all jobs in the American economy, twenty percent required a four-year degree or higher, twenty percent were technical jobs requiring skilled training, and sixty percent were classified as unskilled. But what's the right for- But what's the right percentage to meet the labor market demand for tomorrow? In two thousand eighteen, Harvard University predicts only thirty-three percent of all jobs will require a four-year degree or more, while the overwhelming majority will be middle-skilled jobs, requiring technical skills and training at the credential or associate degree level. A four-year degree may have many benefits, but think about the people you know who, from an economic perspective, inefficiently spend time and money to get a degree that perhaps they didn't really need for the career they are in. The true ratio of jobs in our economy is one, two, seven. For every occupation that requires a master's degree or more, two professional jobs require a university degree, and there are over half a dozen jobs requiring a one-year certificate or two-year degree, and each of these technicians are in very high-skilled areas that are in great demand. This ratio is fundamental to all industries. It was the same in nineteen fifty, the same in nineteen ninety, and will be the same in two thousand thirty. The hope for encouraging university education is that as the number of university trained workers increases, the demand for their services in the workplace will increase as well. Unfortunately, this is not so. The whole pie may get bigger as the labor force and the economy grows, but the ratio will not change. The reality is, there will not be more professional jobs available within the labor market, and some professional jobs have been replaced by technology, or are being outsourced. Well-intentioned attempts to send more and more students straight to the university will not change the types of jobs that dominate our economy, nor will a college-for-all mentality mask these labor market realities. The college-for-all rhetoric that has been so much a part of the current education reform movement is often interpreted as university-for-all. This message needs to be significantly brought to a post-high school credential-for-all. Students at various educational levels have left school without employable skills, setting up our children for failure costing them and taxpayers millions, all while the labor market is desperate for highly-trained, skilled technicians. So, how do you position yourself for high-wage, in-demand jobs? Let's say you were considering a career as either an electrician or a business manager. You would find that the average annual income for electricians is fifty-one thousand, only about half of the one hundred and five thousand average wage for management occupations. So, at first glance, it looks as if getting a bachelor's degree in business is no greater, but adding skills and ability into the picture adds a whole new dynamic. What if you have the potential to become an excellent electrician, but lack the skills and ability to be an excellent manager? Then you should be looking at projected incomes towards the bottom of the pay scale for managers and towards the top for electricians. You would then discover that electricians near the top of the pay scale make around eighty-six thousand, far higher than the income of a manager near the bottom of the pay scale of fifty-two thousand. Now, this is just one example, but the concept is true throughout all industries. The claim that you will make more money with an increased amount of education is not necessarily accurate, it's just incomplete. That advice is based just on the averages, but no one is perfectly average. Everyone has unique skills, talents, and interests. In fact, the income for the top individuals in a wide variety of skilled jobs that require an industry credential or two-year degree is far higher than the average income for many occupations that require a four-year degree. Nationally, associate degree earners range between twenty-seven thousand and sixty-eight thousand, while bachelor's recipients earn between thirty-four thousand and ninety-seven thousand. But this data only accounts for the twenty-fifth to the seventy-fifth percentile of full-time adult workers. This means that twenty-five percent of associate degree holders earn more than sixty-eight thousand annually, and twenty-five percent of bachelor's degree holders earn less than thirty-four thousand. Our world has changed, and in this new economy, the university degree is no longer the guaranteed path towards financial success as it was for previous generations. And even if you do earn one, that education alone may not be enough. In today's highly-technical, knowledge-based economy, having hands-on skills and perfecting what you're good at can be more valuable than getting a degree in something simply to get one. Employers want to know what you can do and what you can do well, not just what degree hangs on the wall. Since new and emerging occupations in every industry now require a combination of academic knowledge and technical ability, we need to ensure that we're also guiding students towards careers and not just to the university. So, before enrolling in classes or deciding what you're going to do next in your life, step one is self-exploration. In addition to your interests, really analyze your talents and strengths. Step two is career exploration. Understand the jobs available, the income ranges they pay, and evaluate the skills they require. Identifying an area that appeals to your interests, skills, and the labor market may be your first career, and then you can develop a tentative career plan, complete with multiple training and. This alignment will help bring your future into focus and ensure your position at the top of the pay scale in your chosen career. What all this data shows is that success in the new economy is as much about acquiring the knowledge, skills, and abilities needed for in-demand occupations as it is to be well-educated. Both paths may work for you, but education combined with technical training is how you ultimately secure competitive advantage in the new economy. Community colleges are in an ideal position to provide over seventy percent of tomorrow's workforce with an education combined with applied technical skills, industry-driven credentials, and specific preparation for employment. Being a skilled craftsman or technician is highly valued. Investments in career education programs at high schools and community colleges will help all students obtain an education which includes technical training and preparation for the workplace. Ultimately, this is how all students can be successful. In the new economy, both education and technical skills are the new currency. So, you be ready?
As we talk about a master plan and an opportunity to expand in Macon County, I think when watching that video, what hits home is that community colleges produce seventy percent of the graduates that will be taking the jobs in the future, so they're going to need that industry credential, the associate degree, or diploma. And, so, I just felt that, you know, that's a new video that just came out from MC, that they do economic impact studies throughout the country, and so this is a new release that they provided to us. And now, just real quick overview of what we did back in December, we talked about the increase of what is happening here in Macon County, seventy-four point four percent increase over a six-year period, approximately twelve percent increase per year. That's our curriculum enrollment, and that's what Dr. Davis can speak to. The public safety and training that Curtis can speak to, again, is at seventy-three percent over a six-year period, again, is twelve percent. It may even be higher than that this year with some of the programs that he's running at this point. The enrollment has been a thirty-six percent increase over a five-year period. I think Dr. Davis will mention to you that it grew five hundred last fall, we're again about seven to eight percent above this spring over last spring. Again, just ninety percent of our grads stay in the area, they go back to the seventy percent of the grads that will be looking for training to get the seventy percent of those jobs. Over ninety percent of emergency medical personnel, law enforcement, we do a lot of first responders is what you know of, and these are people that are service-oriented and help and provide those services. The new report shows that for every dollar spent on education, and we just got this, the total impact in the community colleges have on the US economy is eight-hundred-and-nine billion, which is five-point-four percent of the gross domestic product. That's what they did on a national, and what they show for every dollar now of the dollar of public invest, they'll reaccumulate a value of six dollars and eighty cents per dollar. We receive approximately forty-four, forty-five billion dollars of funding from the public sector, and yet, community colleges generated three-hundred-and-five billion dollars into the taxpayers' benefits, so. You can see that the value, I'm preaching to the choir, I know, but the value of the community college that we hold in our area and in Macon County. This slide, we talked about in December, the value of community college, we are about two-thirds less the cost of the average university tuition and fees. And then we jumped into the master plan. And I may have hit the, may have to pull up that other presentation. What, where we're at right now is in the Groves building, which is this building right here. What we're looking at is, on our master plan, and we've created a master plan that's about thirty years high, so about every eight years we need to expand, and the expansion is right now and present from what we have here at the Groves Center and in Public Safety and Training. This building is a building that is an educational science building that would help provide those science classes, expand, that we do not have here at the Macon Campus, but that building would go directly out of this, from this building, and would be connected by a walkway. And that building is approximately the same size as this building, thirty-five thousand square feet. What we, and then this building here is the Public Safety and Training Building. What we found on the needs of the Public Safety and Training Complex is that the building is about sixteen thousand square feet right now, with the programs that Curtis and they are looking at expanding to, they need an additional thirty-five thousand, so this building is probably, is right at fifty thousand square feet, that would work toward all their classrooms and their training and things and activities that they're not capable necessarily doing now, but it would provide a greater opportunity. This building here is a indoor firing range, and I can let Curtis speak to that also in a minute, and this building is a station that would, could house and could partner with the county for a fire truck EMS-type relay station, and you could have one here that could serve this area out here. Then, eight years down the road, or ten years down the road, there's an extension, again, of the Macon County Campus and the Groves Center here, another building that extends off the one that we had put out here, and then you have an extension of the Public Safety and Training. And then ultimately, we would be looking at a third phase that would be adding to the Public Safety and Training. These phases, phase one, we're looking at helping and working for about eight to ten years. Phase two is another eight to ten years out, phase three is another, so we've got about a thirty-year master plan here at this point. Now, ending in the presentation in December, what we can see here, well, let's start with the yellow. The yellow is what we presently have that is property that we have available to the college to expand on. And you can see that that accommodates the Groves Center or the curriculum side of the house. The public safety side, we're looking at this, I'm going to call it purple, line, and it goes up, this is property that as you look out behind you, off to the right, and goes out down the valley, because here's where the library is at, it just comes straight down. There's possibly nineteen-plus or minus acres right here that would create the opportunity for Southwestern Community College and the Macon County to create a campus in Macon County and consolidate those programs on one, on one location. So, Curtis, is there anything that you would like to add from the standpoint of program expansion?
The one thing that we're having difficulties now with is the practical requirements that we have to do scenarios in so many different disciplines to prepare our public safety professionals is that we don't have the space available to do that. So, what we're doing is that we're sitting in a classroom one minute, we're having to recreate that space into another venue for practical purposes, and with the number of classes that we're running now, that space is becoming, we're running into each other. The building wasn't meant to do what we're doing here right now, we're just, you know, we're making the best we can with the space we've got available, because we don't want to let end out also to the federal program that is coming down the pipe from the National Park Service as well. Going from a smaller building to a larger building allows us to have those scenarios readily available, and then we can be able to combine our curriculum courses of criminal justice and paramedic programs, bring that over to Macon County as well, and fall into that one umbrella of public safety training, and we can share resources at that time, simulation labs, and do a lot of different, unique things together then too. Any questions?
That wooded area, that olive lane that went up there?
Yes, sir.
That's a beautiful ridge down there, is that part of your training area?
We set it, for the National Park Service, we do woodland operations, and then we do some campsite things as well, because they're working in.
See, they have outdoor classrooms.
Yes, sir, we go up to arid woods sometimes, that makes a job for do that, you know, we travel all around, we go up on the wildits, do woodland trappings and stuff like that, we get permits through the Parks, Park Service or the Forest Service to do those things when we do that, so, you know, we have a good working relationship with those folks, but having it readily available cuts down on the travel time and lets us, you know, conduct more training at that time too. The one thing that we'll have to consider at some point is the conclusion of the burn building for our firefighters as well, because our burn building now is third, it's one of the oldest buildings in the state still in operation as well, and with the new requirements that have been set forth by the Office of Fire Marshal for the training of those firefighters, we're the only building, burn building west of Asheville that's approved for use to meet the new standard, because it has to be so many floors and so many square feet. So, now we're getting everybody from Murphy, Clay County, Graham County, and even Haywood County are coming over to use the burn building, because they have to do so many hours of live burn each year. That's really taxing that building out, that's already thirty-one-plus years old as well, so, and I spoke with Mr. Watson this evening about that, addressing that issue as well. So, those are some other things that are coming down the pipe.
And the prison site is out at the industrial site, as you all are aware, and there's really not any room to expand around that. We could build around the one building that we have right there, but then we do a parking lot at the corner, and it's all rock, but then what? You know, we're landlocked again, right there, so. This provides a much more viable opportunity for expansion and future expansion now, rather than building a building of that nature out of public safety and training right now, and then all of a sudden, ten years later, coming and saying, "We need additional space", and then having it split in two different locations.
Being tied into the green wave, because of all of our programs' physical requirements, that allows us to do a lot of physical training, a lot safer than what was running up and down Patton Valley now on the road, the four lines.
So, that's all public safety and training, and that's where the additional nineteen-plus or minus acres would, outside of the boundary that we already presently have. Cheryl, would you like to speak to the curriculum side as far as the needs?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. You know, anytime I get the two minutes that Dr. Thomas gives me to talk, I talk as fast as I can, Mr. Bell. This is one of those situations that is just good and it's good, there is no bad news here. Last fall, we topped the five-hundred head count here at our campus, the first time this year. From last fall to this fall, we increased in FTE, which is our state funding, and head count. Last spring to this spring, we did it again. As a matter of fact, our total number this spring, four-seventy-seven, was what our fall head count was in twenty-twelve. So, I mean, our spring numbers are getting close to what our fall numbers used to be, and you remember when you were in college, fall was a heavy semester, and spring it kind of dwindled off, and then summer, you know, that's when people took vacations. Well, now, our springs are starting to look like our summers, so it's just a great situation. You know, in addition to that, we've got activities planned so that our students are getting a real post-secondary experience here, getting them involved in the community. getting a real post-secondary experience here, getting them involved in the community, lead drives, we've got a spring wing plan, a coffee house where students will be able to come, read their poetry, short stories, play some music, you know, one evening, you know, so really trying to engage those students not only in the classroom, but also extracurricular activities. Well, you know, anytime you're doing something like this, you've got a plan, and the plan is that I wanted to make sure that I'm adding classes to the courses that we've already got offered, that I'm also adding any programs that I can from the Silver Campus here, and that will be in a good neighborhood. In the summer, we've got an extra drawing class coming, so I'm hoping that I can draw some folks from MEC and also the AFA over here. But during the fall, what I'm trying to do is to tag on to those initial courses and specific programs and put in that second course. We'll be adding a conversational Spanish, that zoology course will come back, a new criminology course, and a.
Electrical plumbing and masonry.
I wish I had those buildings.
No, no, no thought of that.
There's always that discussion that we're having, Tom, and Dr. Brooks and I had that discussion the other day, is as we expand down here, what are we going to be able to bring down from vocational-type programs? As you know, we're, we have health sciences on the Jackson Campus, we have welding, and auto mechanics. We do auto mechanics here, but as far as plumbing, electrical, those technications, we don't have those anywhere.
That's why the SEC was based on them originally.
Originally, I think Brooks and Mortar and Masonry and.
People who went to college there, I guess, are about three times now from that.
Well, I got my masonry there, that, that team forty.
We do that for some of the, some of that training that we work with them, but that's not out here, and I know you know what's out of John's court.
But the issues of shrining in the new rock and electronics and things.
Right.
And electrician was used in the program, wasn't it, in the nine-minute, that turned into a fifteen-minute video?
Right, it was. It was one of the examples, there's the electrician.
That's what I thought.
Fifty-minute night?
Also adding some youth classes, some running, jogging, walking, self-defense martial arts, and we're also gonna have someone come down and teach an HSC, one-ten, and orientation to health careers. So you can see, I'm trying to diversify, not only to build on some of the courses we've already got, but also to diversify and to attract some new students. In addition to that, we're also bringing down some new continuing ed classes. Last night, we just finished a beginning sign language. Yoga is going on downstairs right now, getting paid to talk, a ton of real estate courses, digital photography. So I'm trying to be a good steward about the credit level courses that we've got going on during the daytime, but also bringing in some continuing education classes at night. Now, you've also got somebody like Tiffany Henry that does a great job with that small business center. And last night, I had an opportunity to look at some of the projects they are presenting. You know, twenty-five or thirty people that have been here for the entire series trying to figure out, you know, what's a good business plan, how am I gonna put it together, how's it gonna be successful? So, you know, another perspective that's being added to the campus. And so with that, I would say that we're trying to diversify where our students are. We're bringing in an opportunity for them to go to Costa Rica next spring so that they can experience that different culture. So we're really trying to open up abroad with the possibilities for a student that comes to our campus here. Bottom line is, the college is committed to growing the college at Macon Campus. It is. In a conversation with Dr. Thomas today, he said, "If the budget holds to form, I should be able to advertise for two full new instructors, one in math and a biology instructor, which is going to add, you know, to what we've got here." Because when you think about this here, I have one full-time instructors, thirty-plus adjuncts that work here, we've got three staff, one temporary, and two tutors. And so you'll have another person, another two people that are invested, you know, in growing this campus.
Do you have Friday classes here?
We do have some, some.
It looks awful, it looks awful dry on Friday.
And you know what? A post-secondary took a turn. You probably grew at the same time I did, you had Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes, and then Tuesday, Thursday classes. Yeah, and every now and then, you'd have a class on Saturday, like a physics lab or something like that. Well, about five or seven years ago, they shifted to Monday, Wednesday classes, and just Tuesday, Thursday is Bob Holt can come in and teach those real estate classes for us. MEC is able to use, utilize the building for leadership, and then they're also able to get into our labs downstairs, you know, put some real good use to those things. So we do try to take advantage of that. Bottom line, I have the same three commitments that I walked in this door with. One, I wanna add to the number of courses that we're able to offer. I can grow the campus that way. Two, I can bring in some additional programs, and not saying that necessarily have to be different than what's going on over in Silver, just if I can bring some more of those down here. And third, if I can be a good neighbor. Those are the three things we're trying to do. And bottom line, we're doing a good job. Curtis's program, I mean, it's hats off to him all the time. And our numbers here, the only negative I got from Dr. Thomas today was, "But you haven't hit five hundred head count in the spring yet." So I guess that's what's next on my target, and so, but I can tell you, I appreciate all the opportunities you provide us here, and we try to be good stewards. Thanks, sir.
It really wasn't a negative. You flagged on that five hundred, and I just done saying how much you've grown in the spring, and I said, "Now, did you hit five hundred in the spring yet?" It's also like, I was expecting you to say, "Absolutely," but.
Four seventy-seven.
Four seventy-seven, well, a year from now, you'll be there. So with that said, to condense the hour-long presentation down to nine-minute video, the request from us would be for consideration of the nineteen-plus or minus acres and a memorandum of understanding that could be signed by the Macon County Commissioners, Southwestern Community College, as first right refusal for that property for future expansion. And that, that request comes from your board? That request comes from our board and our administration.
What about construction? I mean, do you have any idea about the money for it, Dr. Thomas?
Well, there's not anything at the state level at this particular point in time, but we have to prepare ourselves for when that does occur again, should it occur. Without having a plan or a master plan and having the ability, and all of a sudden, they release something in a bond or funding, and all of a sudden, we come back and we say, "We don't have a place to build, we'd love to have ten million dollars." So right now, what we're trying to do is phase it into the planning phase. First things first, secure or at least have a security of property. If that should happen in the future, then we can come in, and we'll be ready to go. We won't have to worry about asking for the property and going through maybe a six-month or longer process.
So to summarize you, this, this property with purple is currently owned by the county?
Correct.
And what you're asking for is not for us to deed you at this point, you're asking for us to give you.
First right refusal in the future. In the future for expansion and creating a campus in Macon.
And would that be, would that be good enough, Terry, to seek any state funding, should that become available, the first right refusal would be as good as?
I would think so, because at that point in time, then we would probably have to come back, and depending on the funding and how we would do the financing, we'd have to have to deed it over then probably at that point in time.
And entering building to have the Maywood, it may be in the county, it may be untitled to the county, so the community college, you know, I don't know. Major questions?
The property line at the library that we talked about, Dr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
To the left?
Yes.
Was that moved?
This, this was moved because originally, Commissioner Beale, we, I believe, we came off this point and then came down, and your request, when we looked at it originally, we did not wanna.
The library.
Growth coming up with a parking lot for our expansion of the library.
So thirty years from now, the county wanted to expand the library, that would be the natural place for that.
It would go, yes. It goes, it goes out that way.
Would we need a survey, do you think?
Mike, you did, you have a partial survey, Mr. Sprinkles and I communicated during this process, and you do have some, some, you would need some additional survey.
Yes. Probably official survey at the time of, you know, construction or needing it over, but I think right now, it's pretty fairly accurate.
I would also like to add, the Community College of Southwest has done a complete archaeological study, and on all, on every site that they had intentions on putting a building on or disturbing, it didn't came back clean as a whistle. There were no artifacts discovered in hundreds of holes dug, and you can see that, some bottle caps from.
Piece of a brick.
Right over there.
I'm never saying.
You read that, did you? That was a lot of.
It was, it was an history lesson for me. I don't care about brick making, but I know about it now.
But they didn't find any charitable artifacts in any of them.
You're a bit gunner, Alfred. I have no problem with that. I think that, in my opinion, is probably the highest and best use for that property, and I have thought for your, having Southwest Community College here is such an asset to our community and to our young folks, and I've got knowledge tested for that, since it tends here, and hoping that you like patient America, and so pretty much believing in that first is, offering a much lower cost education than the university. So, and with that said, if Southwest is going to expand in Macon County, this would be a logical place to do it. So I would be for, but I think we need to, to, we need to put some type of tightening on, we can't make it open-ended forever, you know, maybe have Chester.
Yes.
Look, grab something for us to consider, Chester.
Basically, what we'd be looking at is a first right refusal. I think they're looking for something that would accommodate a thirty-year plan. Obviously, I think the county would like to see things happen sooner rather than later, and I, we may as well talk further about those specifics.
Let me just ask, we're not, I mean, obviously, we don't have a podium to vote on, but I consensus of the board, do we have a general consensus that we would consider this if Chester brought that to us, Ronnie?
Oh, yeah, I think, I think with no doubt.
I think, you have a consensus of the board that we're in favor of this.
I do think there's some questions about, because boards change, and ten years, people change, and I think there needs to be something solidified on the points of designation on the map. Now, you might go back to an ODB and get the calls off of that without having to pay for a survey, but.
Yeah, I think there are a number of considerations that would need to be addressed, and sort of first right of refusal, including but not limited to what sort of commitments that the community college would be making in return for it. And those things would need to be a part and parcel of the first right refusal.
What's your anticipation? First, I know the state funding's not available, but would you say your goal would be to page one within two years, five years, within?
Or sooner if the money was there, absolutely, yeah. This would be great, I mean, we've already outgrown this space, Cheryl's, with her classes. You've had workforce solutions in here, many of the community colleges have workforce solutions on their campuses because they're working that partnership.
And what's not, what's not been said is that this campus had zero students before, you know.
Right, it's what, ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Ninety-seven, ninety, yeah.
Fifteen years ago.
Right.
Zero students here.
With their, okay.
I'll tell you what, let's see something started on that, because it's like you was talking about having electrician training courses and all these other vocationals, I think it should be great out here for a lot of things.
It's coming back.
Yep.
Well, it's, there's none left, I mean, all the Canadian individuals, students, all the people we used were retiring, they're aging now, and the younger few are races, I hope, I hope they accept it.
Well, I think from that video, we did an excellent job as a society telling everyone, "You have to go to college." And we, and we made the point of four-year institution. Two thousand, two or something like that.
They did, they did a statewide funding that the Western Carolina guys, they're performing arts, building and all that, so the state occasion does that.
The last, last state funding that came out was probably two thousand.
Two or three.
Yeah, two or four. And I know that that's what everybody's hitting, the DA, General Assembly for right now, is buildings and facilities again, so.
And with that said.
We're hopeful that something will come.
We talked about quote price, and I think Ronnie's right, I can't imagine, certainly this current board, and I really can't imagine a future board commissioners that would say, "Okay, we're gonna sell this property to an industry or to, for any other purpose." So it would, I think that the plan is and has been for this to be used by Southwest Community Colleges. Would there be an objection to this, as we write this, perhaps making it a gift at that time to be used, as you say, potentially for some matching money, the value of the property, the market value of the property to be used as a match?
That would be the county's contribution then.
It would be valuable to get that match.
Right.
Would you, would you?
Would you give us a gift of whatever, yeah.
So would, is that something we'd be open to?
What we like, see, tie it up for some of the.
Yeah, that's exactly what was going through my mind as we're sitting here talking, not sure that the option is necessarily the best vehicle, the first right refusal may not be the best.
That's not gonna do what we.
But, but what I would encourage you to do is authorize me to, to meet with Dr. Thomas and just a little bit of brainstorming about what sort of an agreement could be structured that would meet their needs and would also make counties.
Make it hard on mine.
With the idea that, in a sense, you're, you're sort of making a commitment to set this property aside for these uses that have been presented, and likewise, a commitment that those uses, in fact, cover some issues at some point.
Chester, I'm watching by language our board members here, I think that that's a general consensus that we'd like to do that, so why don't you get with Dr. Thomas and discuss the details and bring that back to us in the future board meeting?
Correct. Okay.
I'll probably get one of those sitting here, let me see something that looks like your companion.
I wish we had the money for you now, I was gonna.
I do too. I guess, Commissioner Tate could grow one.
That's good. I asked a lot of unique questions.
That's all right, I don't always have the answer. Okay, I was gonna say that.
What is the future of public libraries?
That's, yeah, and I couldn't, I couldn't answer that one.
They don't sit here looking. The last, last research I've seen on that, because everything going with electronics, there's kind of a shift now that people are actually going back to paper and doing that. But that's an asset to us as a public library, that's always gonna be a need for a college setting because of research and that, and even though, you know, we do EMS and we do law enforcement, we still have that research need because our training can face up to that.
But here.
Having it there is a value.
It would be a lot correct.
Our libraries just have to be leaves on the library, so I can speak to the library. Our library is, is Westbury Library Systems. I think we saw in, if we can give the numbers exactly, it was well in excess of two or fifty thousand, essentially, of our library. So library was still very useful, Hudson Library in Highlands, Swinney guys just expanded their library and building new library, so library's a good state.
Yeah, and Southern Association Accreditation, which is our original accrediting body, this has been acknowledged as a campus, and it wouldn't have been acknowledged without that library, because as part of the accrediting process, you have to have that, have to have that library available in order to have a campus designation distinction. So there's still that partnership.
Somewhere down the road, that might even be, I mean, still be.
Oh, oh, yeah, yes, yes. I think I understand where you're going with that, yes. It's, it's an absolutely perfect storm.
It's gonna be an avalanche.
It's a perfect storm because you've got early college on one side, you've got the library, and then you've got the rest of the other college right here going, so, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's almost, it's all tied together.
Dr. Thomas, I think you've got a consensus of this board, we've been here with this, so we're gonna ask our attorney to bring it back to us. Now, Tom, I think you've got a consensus of this board, we've been hearing this, so we're going to ask our attorney to bring that back to us. We'll go from that, any, any other questions or comments? Thank, thank you guys.
Thank you all, again, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you all for the time and.
Thank you for what you do.
Went longer than I guessed, but.
Will, a lot of you guys could translate, I think we need to recess in just a minute, and then we're going to. Thank you for your close second.
Are we doing good? Making it good, good. Four-year degree, new four-year degree, now we're reeducating everybody and saying, you don't need.
Some of them are picking up, well, of course, you know, a lot of.
Absolutely.
Well, some of East County, Fifth County, that's, East Carolina, oh, yeah, they've got the whole, okay, they started a whole new city.
And not to mention the average cost of a four-year degree to get private in the public is probably a hundred, at the high side of a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, your cost of the.
I mean, it's probably, it's a bit.
It's a better education than you are.
Ten thousand.
Well, I, I think our board is very supportive of, of expanding this campus here for the benefit of our citizens. You know, I would certainly welcome a proposal, Chester.
Items for consideration, Mr. Chairman, if I could, you know, first right of refusal, and, and as Commissioner Beal said, you know, points and boards change. Is there a way to put language in that we would be able to, the state funded five million, ten million dollars to build a building, that that's an automatic given, that we would be able to move forward with that project, as opposed to if the board changes and says, oh, no, that was a board before us, first right of refusal done before. Is there language that we could?
Just be upon release, right, you know, there's certain areas.
Well, I think what Dr. is referencing is, the first right of refusal really doesn't come about the ability to act over it unless and until the county decides that it is going to sell this property or transfer this property. What the first right of refusal would give to the school system is the, for example, if the county were able to entertain an offer on this piece of property, and let's just round, round figuring, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever, whatever it is, is offered, and the county's inclined to sell it for that. Before the county could even entertain that offer, it must first go back to the school system and say, we've got this offer, and if you're interested, you can buy it for that, basically, is what first right of refusal does. I think what the doctor is, is referencing here is possibly to maybe something akin to an option, possibly to purchase the property at, or, or something more than a first right of refusal in the event they got funding, that they buy it. I mean, right now, they don't have a commitment to the funding necessary to do this project immediately. But if something were to shake loose, and they were to get ten million or twenty million or whatever it is, I think they would be coming to you and saying, we, we need to be able to buy this piece of property now, or we need to be able to close on this piece of property. The first right of refusal would not give them that, and I think what they're concerned about is having something that they can present to those who determine who does and doesn't get the money, that they're ready to go, that they have this piece of property locked up if they get the money to move forward.
Can you do both things, can you, can you do that, can you also put in there, if they wish the funds to come through, that, that this parcel, this, except for this four point three acres can be released, can you put that in there somehow? That a parcel, a portion of the, they can afford to buy the whole thing, they can still retain.
I think any number of permutations could be come up, you know, we could come up with to deal with that. It'd be a matter of just discussing with some specificity what the foreseeable needs might be. And, but you need to understand that, that an option is much different than a first right of refusal. Not only does it potentially take away the county's ability to use that piece of property for whatever needs it might have, it basically says, you're, you're holding that piece of property aside for the community college to purchase at a given price. That's something with it now, I appreciate that.
Oh, no, he just triggered the sale. What he's looking for is some way to call the first right of refusal, and then even into that.
There would be no way to call it unless and until somebody made an offer. First right of refusal.
Yes, if the county was able to act on selling the property, but even, like you said, we just gave them a first right of refusal, and we never decided to sell it, whatever he's holding is worth nothing.
It's absolutely worth nothing.
We need some sort of reverse trigger or something, so that if he does get funding.
They can make an offer.
Then he could, he could ask the county to.
And I think that that could potentially come about in the form of an option to purchase. And we would just need to sit down and figure out the terms that would be acceptable to them, and then terms and protections that the county would need as well.
And then the sale price is just, is, is included in an option?
Yeah.
You don't give.
You could set, you could set the sale price, indeed, you could, you know, we don't know whether that would happen today or tomorrow, or ten years from now.
But if he has an option, he'll call it, and there's no set price. Two boards from now could say, hey, well, forty million dollars.
Well, in, in, in that event, we're going to have to be careful and creative on how that option price is established. It could be, it could be done, one typical way that is often done is, is that there'd be a couple of appraisals done at, at the time the options exercised. There's any of a number of ways that it could be done, you could set it, you could set a price if exercised today, and then you could add an inflator to it, any of a number of things, and that's just a product of further discussions, I think, with, with leadership.
Jerry or somebody that, remember how this property was handled before we're sitting down?
Just, it was a, it really, really was a gift.
A gift from the county.
Yeah, it was deeded from the county to the property. And I mean this college, it's, as Ronnie said, we're losing out on our trade, our location. I graduated Sillman nineteen sixty-eight.
I'm in the first grade.
Times a dog's crap, it didn't work. Saw what old college, now I'm on the back of for a living, but education, that fork, no, it does. And I, I mean, I'm with Ronnie, we've got this hands-on technical training, it's, we're just losing it. And, I mean, that has nothing to do with what you're presenting here tonight, but.
No.
And I would hope that future board would be supporting this level of education.
And we appreciate the support that we have received from y'all today. And we continue to, as Cheryl said, we want to do the, the right thing for the right reason, and that's to help educate and, and provide the services necessary for Macon County, so.
Will you, you're going to bring something back to us, that says, and some options for us to look at?
Yeah, I, I think probably what we need to do first is just get some very basic documents for discussion purposes. And I guess I need a point of contact with the, with the school. Will you make the document, that point of contact, okay. And, and because basically what I would want to do is try to present some documents that we feel fairly comfortable the school can, can live with, and documents that we feel fairly comfortable with, yeah.
There's only two people really interested in property is the county and the school, correct? I mean, let's just be honest, that's the only two entities that I think the county ever recognized, you know, this, the school is here, they want to stay here, so.
Well, I, I think basically, if I understand it correctly, the idea, this was purchased with the idea that it would be for educational purposes.
I think we want to be perfectly honest, and I may not be here really familiar with it.
And, and I think that's, yeah, and, and from that standpoint, first right of refusal was, you know, somewhat. It may not be the right purpose or object, if, if really what you're looking at is, is, is a gift. And the option might not be the right purpose, if you're looking for.
You put a value on it, we want you to set the price that value, and say this is a gift. And never had to sit through all these meetings before, and it's not to do that. You know, this is a good plan, I mean, it's detailed, but it's lacking the financial arrangement thing, which you'd explain, you don't know what that's called, but how's funding generally done? How do you get past the land and acquisition of all that? How do you build these, how do you build colleges?
Well, again, the state will come out with bonds, and then we can, they'll release money that we'll be able to ask for on that. There are county support, there's local support in the counties that have money that they put monies into, they have matched monies. The gift of the land can be used as part of that match money that we draw down from the state. I think the Rose Building here was bought, or was built that way, I think there's like three million dollars that was brought down here, the building, Rose Building. There's other source.